Well, good evening. It is seven o'clock on April 24th, 2018. I'd like to welcome you all to the College Place City Council meeting. Ms. Nyhagen is going to lead our bunch of allegiance and our invocation.
We're here, please. Give my solemn thank you for the opportunity to serve our city, or thankful for those who have come to join us, and may the decisions we make be according to thy will in Jesus' name.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of rich and sound, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for a public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Once again, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing none before us is a consent agenda, approving this agenda, approving the council minutes, and approving the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Chief Tomares.
Well, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, this is a fun evening for me tonight because I get to do the office for Officer Salvador Diaz. So I'd like to have him come up after this. And before I square him in, I just wanted to just let the City Council know that the day he graduated the academy, he was deployed for a year to serve our country in the United States of America. And we're so glad to have him back. We're also very thankful for his service, so very special day. So with that being said, why don't you come over here? Why don't you come over here? Go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. The ayes take name.
Ayes, have it or leave it.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As prescribed by law?
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
And will support and maintain all valid ordinances?
And will support and maintain all valid ordinances.
Of the City of College Place?
Of the City of College Place.
The laws and the Constitution?
The laws and the Constitution.
Of the State of Washington?
Of the State of Washington.
And the United States of America, so help me God.
And the United States of America, so help me God.
Thank you, Officer Diaz.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for working.
No, no, we haven't.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Officer Diaz, before you sit down, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? You didn't know you were gonna have a speaking part.
Do you want the microphone? No, no.
I was raised in Northwater, Florida, Mexico. That's my sister used to that game. So I wanted to do for a very long time, and I went right along since I was in junior high, started doing right along, wanted to do this, and very happy to be here. Appreciate the opportunity. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you once again.
Thank you.
So we have a public hearing. Mr. Ricard.
Thank you. We have an annexation tonight. Merlin Phillips applied for the annexation on March 15th of this year. The property consists of 1.25 acres. It's off of Northwest Evans, and you can see it on this aerial image here. This, it's kinda hard to see, but this is red right here. So Northwest Evans, B Street, Whitman. So it's this piece back in here that's highlighted in red. There is a access easement between these two homes that provides primary access. Mr. Phillips is applying for annexation so that he can gain access to our sewage, our wastewater. District 14 is the water supplier to the area, so he'll just, he'll only need sewer from us. We're using the 60 percent annexation method. On March 27th, council agreed to accept the annexation as proposed, require the simultaneous adoption of zoning regulations, and assign the zoning of our 60 single-family residential, and require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed, and set the public hearing date for today. On April 10th, we posted the site and notified property owners within 300 feet and published it in the Union Bulletin. We have not, staff has not received any public comment at this point regarding the annexation. So that's all the information I have to present tonight. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Ricard.
Do you have a question before you can answer?
You can.
I don't have any. I just love it here.
So seeing no questions, we'll open the public hearing for annexation of 211 Northwest Evans. Anyone wishing to testify for or against the annexation, please step forward and state your name and address. Once again, anyone wishing to testify for or against the annexation of 211 Northwest Evans, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anyone wishing to testify for or against the annexation of 211 Northwest Evans, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ricard. Moving to action items, annexation of 211 Northwest Evans. Mr. Ricard.
Any questions regarding the annexation? Or would you like me to go through the information?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 18-009, annexing 211 Northwest Evans Avenue into the City of College Place.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ricard, Alliance Park renovation.
Okay, so staff is preparing an application to the Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO, with a May 1st deadline. We've been working with our consultant SPVV, landscape architects out of Spokane area, and that's moving along well. We have refined the budget, and with all of the items that I presented at the last meeting, we spoke with the finance department, and it was determined that we needed to pull back, scale things back a little bit. So we've removed the, we've removed the restroom that we had proposed up at the cul-de-sac off of Eighth. We eliminated part of the pathway that's along the north side of the creek. We also eliminated, we were proposing a second picnic shelter in this area, the kind of the northwest corner of the park. And we also toyed with, and as presented in the packet tonight, we toyed with removing the dredging of the pond and the fishing dock. We were trying to get within a matching dollar amount on the city's behalf of $500,000 so that we could do that project, this project in 2019 if we're successful at the grant. So we've vacillated back and forth regarding the pond because it really is our only opportunity to successfully apply to RCO for funds to do the dredging part of that and the fishing dock. RCO will not, so if you recall back with the whole scope of the pond part, part of it is removing the weir, and part of it is separating the pond and the stream channel, and also controlling the flow of the water in and out of the pond. Those are, and then there's the stormwater element, removing the stormwater from the neighborhood to the south, which dumps right into that pond. Those elements are not eligible for funding through RCO. So they were never contemplated in our grant application, but we believe that there are other sources that we're gonna seek revenue funding for, for those aspects of it, so it would be a separate project. We think Department of Ecology would be a good source for the stormwater issue, and then there are some local agencies that might be willing, or nonprofits that may be willing to donate some money to the project, possibly Fish and Wildlife for the removal of the weir. So, and the other thing we contemplated in order to keep the dredging and the fish dock, fishing dock in this scope, is that we have two years to complete this project, so if we break it into two years, that gives the finance department an opportunity to find other revenue sources to, for our match, and also enables us to go out and maybe apply for a grant from the Sherwood Trust, you know, so we can do some additional revenue generation in this first year. In 2019, we would also do the design portion of it and get that taken care of, and then there's also some, the nine-tenths revenue fund that we can pull from in 2020 as well to apply to this project. So it didn't bump up much. It's, I believe we're around a little over 1.3 million as opposed to the 1.29 with the pond scope in there, so, but, you know, we have the key elements that we think are going to really attract and win the RCO board over, the splash pad, the new playground equipment, the new picnic shelter, the walking path that has the exercise equipment around it. So for the most part, the scope of the project is intact. So what we have tonight before you is a motion to approve a resolution that would authorize staff to seek the grant funding through RCO at the end of the month.
Questions for Mr. Ricard. Ms. Selby.
Can you use volunteer hours as part of the match?
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and we most likely will try. Another portion of the match, which is included, is the demolition of the existing grandstands and the buildings around there. Our staff will do that, the Public Works Department, and that's a, you know, 17 or 20,000 dollar portion of the project. So yeah, there's some other exhibits in there showing the play equipment that we're proposing that'll have a central feature. So the play equipment is natural play. We're gonna try to utilize the existing fire, the chimney from the picnic shelter as a climbing wall, other natural play with logs and slides and new swings, and some, you know, music instruments, wind chimes sort of things, not wind chimes, but anyhow. And then going down to the splash pad, it'll have a larger central feature that'll have, you know, the buckets that fill up and then dump on the kids, features that shoot out of the ground, a couple of water cans, that sort of thing. It should be a nice feature.
Other questions for Mr. Ricard? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve a resolution, number 1800. Check the right one, if you can, to authorize the staff to seek grant funding through the Recreation and the Conserva, Conservation Office.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion?
It's exciting.
Ms. Selby.
Do we need to, because of the late breaking part in the, some of the language in the agenda bill, do we need to do anything with the motion to make it clear that the pond part isn't included?
The resolution doesn't speak to any of the elements of the pond. It's just an agreement that we're, that you're, that we have basically approval by the council to apply for the grant. It's a very scripted, can't change any of the words sort of thing in their resolution according to the state.
Any further discussion? So moved and seconded, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Wizadellis, Pilot Summer Youth Recreation Program, memorandum of understanding with United Way of Walla Walla.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This program came about from results of a survey that Walla Walla University students conducted a while back, poll, doing a random sample, survey of basically city services as well as programs that residents would like to see. One of the programs has skewed pretty heavily is the need for the youth recreation programs. The general concept surrounding this was presented to City Council on April 3rd. I talked with Kristy Lou Allen over at United Way, and she was offering to basically lead a fundraising effort to help fund pilot youth recreation programs this summer. However, both of us agree that it would be good to have a memorandum of understanding to govern this. I was directed to go ahead and continue discussions. On April 12th, we had a youth recreation roundtable with several providers here, including Campfire, YWCA, YMCA, Sunbridge, Valley Camps, University, Walla Walla Valley Academy, you name it, they were here pretty much, and they are very interested in providing programs here. So what United Way would like to see, so we have some skin in the game on this, is that the city would consider giving 5,000 towards this. They are doing the fundraising to essentially mass, match and surpass this. Last discussions with them, they put in for grant, and we're doing different types of donations, and they were getting near the $20,000 figure on this. And the concept is this would go from mid-June to mid-August. We asked all folks who were here at that youth recreation roundtable to submit proposals to us, and if this gets approved tonight, the plan is, is first thing in the morning, we're all meeting to look at the proposals and have a discussion and essentially which ones would be best for residents. This went to Park Board, they thought this was a great idea and moved very quick on this, and the reason we moved this very quick is because summer is coming very soon, and for all of these providers to staff up appropriately, they need to know what they're doing and who they're providing for. One of the conditions is that any of the folks who'd be providing said programs, it has to originate out of College Place, so either if it's in the city or if there's transportation going to a place, but that was one of the big issues that we heard, that the folks who needed this the most had problems getting over to Walla Walla. So this really helps solve all this. They'll help us do additional fundraising, collect data, and if a lot of folks use this, well known that can become a budget priority if this council so chooses the following year. Another part of this is that staff will create a flyer that has where all the activities are at and times, and all the other good stuff to get out to residents once we decide who gets what.
Questions for Mr. Wizadellis. Ms. Selby.
I would like to move that the City Council authorize the city administrator to sign a memorandum of understanding with United Way of Walla Walla County regarding a summer youth recreation program, and that we appropriate $5,000.
Been moved by Ms. Selby. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Mr. Peterson.
One quick question, Mike, and this is, may not apply to this, it is reminding me of something. Is the City of College Place able to employ or engage with AmeriCorps for the temporary training or the additional staff to help out? I think Blue Mountain Action Council coordinates that, and I believe they had, some of their going to the public schools and whatnot, but is the city able to engage with that?
Yeah.
In general?
We would be able to. There needs to be more planning that would go into it, though, and that was the reason we decided to go this route, because of the inability to scale up quickly, and now they add to a lot of difficulty on.
And Mike, I'm not, yeah, even beyond this plan, I was thinking as we were thinking about it, they could be an adjunct to this or whatnot, or other programs, but the city can engage with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Selby.
I just wanna make sure that there is no concern with the way I reworded the motion.
The city clerk has none?
I just wanted to make sure the appropriation was nice and clear.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hartwig, chip seal.
Every year we contract with the county to do our chip sealing. This year, we want to accomplish chip sealing on Ash from Ford to Seag, basically all of Ash. A from College to Cedar, B from College to Lorela, C from Davis to Academy, and D from Davis to Academy. We are in the process right now of prepping, we've done the crack sealing in the areas. Now we're hoping that we got all our equipment ready, we'll be out patching and smoothing out the areas that will be chip sealed. This contract is for the county to do that. They proposed an amount of $51,463.63, and I've added just 10% because this is just their estimate, and so hopefully that will fall in that, so I'm asking for approval for administration to execute that agreement with the county.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig? I think Mr. Peterson, then Ms. Selby, and then Ms. Sherman.
I was ready to go.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve administration to execute the contract with Walla Walla County Public Works for 2018 chip sealing for $51,463.63 plus 10% contingency for a total of $57,000.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Selby.
This isn't really a question, it's more of a suggestion. I think it'd be really helpful if we could include in one of our utility bill inserts or something, kind of an explanation of why chip sealing is what we choose and why it's important. I keep hearing from people who complain about the chip sealing program, and I think it would be nice to have it kind of in black and white, why it's so important and why we choose chip sealing rather than other options. I mean, I support it, but you know, I.
I think we can get that for the.
May and June.
For the June, June utility bill, I think we're a little closer than May.
This one usually, chip sealing usually happens either the end of June or sometime before mid-June.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Mr. Gordon, Fourth Street Academy Way Project Construction Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I have good news tonight. As you recall, we opened bids for the Fourth Street Academy Way project on the 10th, and Anderson Perry, our design and consulting engineer, reviewed those bids and has submitted a recommendation to award that bid of $876,237.6, Humbert Asphalt, which, the really good news is that's only 78% of the engineer's estimate, which is really good news, especially in this day and age. So what we've done here, and you'll see before you, is actually, we normally ask for a 10% contingency because of all the field situations that come up, and typically you'll spend at least some of that during construction. In this case, we'd actually ask for 20%. That 20% doesn't even take us up to the full engineer's estimate to begin with, but what that'll allow us to do is to put fiber into the ground for future use so we can monetize some of our assets. This is something that Mike has been thinking about doing on all of our projects, so that we have concrete fiber available for lease by the utility companies when they come, and we'd like to put cable in the ground. Really would simplify things for us as far as utility coordination as well. So what we're coming to before you this evening is the approval for the mayor to sign that contract. He will initially for a notice of award, after which we will sign the contract with Humbert Asphalt.
Questions for Mr. Gordon? Mr. Cleveland?
I just wanna say how much I appreciate thinking it forward with fiber and that kind of utility type stuff, and just hoping for future faster internet speeds.
How are you gonna approach the addendum to the contract for fiber?
At this point, all we're doing is we're asking for authorization as a change order if we need it, so we have it as contingency. The contractor's not aware yet of our intent to add that. We will have discussions either now or with the pack. The approximate cost, based on just what we did on the car scratch project, is about $65,000, so we have a bit more in there than that because we don't know for sure what that charge would be, but it'll be a sit-down negotiation with the contractors and change order.
So we'll see the change order?
If you approve this contingency here, we can bring that to you, but we wouldn't typically bring that before you.
Mr. Peterson.
So this would connect the fiber on College Avenue or the, what's been laid there, correct?
It'll connect the conduit, there's nothing.
Right, into the conduit, but this then puts the connection to that main hub potentially up towards the academy, right? Is that what?
Not quite.
They were missing, yeah, just a.
Yes, not quite, because what we have right now is a gap between Davis and College Avenue, which is something else to discuss in the next agenda item, but yeah, so that's one of the items that.
Oh, we're 70% there, yeah.
As we go, everywhere we go, as we open up the ground, we think we're putting in the.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Selby.
Has this contractor done work, I think, who's responsible for any of the projects that we've had in the past?
Oh, yes, they're good. And we're very pleased with their performance. They did, see, they did a grind on Larch, and I did a grind on Ford a few years back, and I think they're thinking to have one on Friday, so.
That being very involved with the grind on Larch, so very, very, very talented. Mr. Peterson. So do you want us to mention anything about the additional project in the motion for fiber?
The amount here is reflected in the agenda item, which includes that additional 10% for the fiber, so I think if you just, per this particular motion, you should be fine.
I'd make, I'd like to make a motion then. Mr. Peterson. To authorize a mayor to execute the Fourth Street Academy Way Project Construction Agreement with Humbert Asphalt Incorporated for an amount of $8,000, $800,076,237, and to provide the city administrator with discretionary budget authority for an additional $175,247.41, which is 20% of construction bid for a total not to exceed amount of $1,051,484.47. It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, I think seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Four Bikes Project Grant Application.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Once again, this is a project that takes up for the other project, we have a presentation here, I can come here for that. Thanks, Ms. Selby. We're just gonna run through this. This is about 1,600 feet of improvement, really takes off at Davis intersection on Fourth Street, headed to College Avenue to kind of fill the gaps between what we saw. Can you see, is it working?
Yeah.
Maybe Lisa can hit that. There we go. For whatever reason, this is not working very well. This is the Four Bikes project. We've rebranded it. This is really Phase Two of the Fourth Street Academy Way project for a variety of reasons. We're calling it a new project, and this is the logo we put together for it. The purple there that you see is the Fourth Street project we just talked about that you approved for construction. This is the segment here, Lisa, if you can hit that again. There you go. We have bicycle routes identified for College Avenue, if you hit it again, and also for Whitman out here. There's a gap here in terms of our connectivity on the path, and then we have all these attractions with Rogers, Wawa, and the university gym, as well as the university church right here. So we've got a lot of potential use for that area, and this bigger project has a couple of things going for it. One is the connectivity. We're trying to connect our bicycle routes to these particular areas, and the second is we're trying to encourage bicycle traffic and use on campus and for everybody in that area. So, we're not getting a lot now, but we're hopeful that putting in some of these facilities that we will encourage that kind of activity, decrease some of the parking issues and decrease some of the vehicle use or transport across the campus. So, that's what we're about. Lisa, if you can hit that again. I'm sorry, that's the connectivity part. And here's the cycle track, just a reminder of what we're talking about. Basically, it's a two-lane cycle, two lanes of cycle traffic on one side of the road. We're anticipating that will be the same side of the road as we have on the current project, just the continuity all the way across, but there may be some back and forth on that. We're still playing with that news. We may, well, let me show you a few of the options. Go ahead. Okay, so this is option A, and this has a 10-foot sidewalk on the south side of Fourth Street. This is Davis, Vade, Vade all the way to College Avenue. See if we can connect this up to here to get a whole picture. So the cycle track's on the south side, and we've got a six-foot sidewalk on the north. What we're trying to, looking at is kind of get some planning to actually put in some ornamental streetlights as well along here to match what we have on College Avenue. You wouldn't do it at the 80-foot spacing that we have today. We do it at twice that spacing, 160 feet, say some cross, still provides some aesthetic value there, so we're looking at that. And so we have a cycle track, six-foot sidewalk north, 10-foot sidewalk south, and then Lisa, we'll hit the next one, and this is what we have. This will be the south side with the lights, 10-foot, your cycle track, and then your six-foot sidewalk on the north. Option B is really very much the same, just that we throw the 10-foot sidewalk on either side, okay? Same idea, go ahead, Lisa, 10-foot sidewalk on the north and then on the south. So we'll just switch this 10-foot section over here, another option slightly less expensive. And then option C, if you'll notice, those two are three of these options that can have room for parking, and so this option will leave, allows for parking, but we would have to give up the streetlights and the 10-foot sidewalks. So we would have six-foot sidewalks on both sides with parking, and obviously we could maybe flip it if we wanted to put the cycle track on either side, but this is an option as well. So we're looking at all three of those options under this grant. We still have not come down settle on the final. From an engineering and safety perspective, I would, at this point, lean towards option A, where we have the cycle track on the same side as we have on Fourth Street, but the downside is we lose parking. Okay? And this is what it would look like, six-foot sidewalks on both sides. And that's all I have for them. What we're asking for in this resolution is for council to authorize us to apply for grant funding for this. We actually have three sources, four grant sources that we're going for. Two of them come through Washshots, same routes to schools, and also the pedestrian grant program. That's actually, the same routes to schools program, grant is actually due on the 27th this Friday, and then I think Ted and Mike would link first or something like that. Then the Valley, the Walla Walla Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is our conduit for federal funds in the area, they have a later grant date that we have to get it in by. The, one of the things that we're gonna be doing is coming back to you to place this particular part of the project on our six-year tip at our next meeting, because that'll give us some advantages in terms of applying for that, for the federal mines through our NPL. So, long story short, four different grants that we're going out for. We're just asking you folks to allow us to go forward with that.
Questions for Mr. Gordon. Mr. Cleveland, then Mr. Dickerson.
So you mentioned that there might be, is there gonna be connecting conduit in this project included then?
The numbers you have here do not include that.
Okay.
Okay? It would probably be about half what we're looking at on the Fourth Street project. It's about half that distance, so it's another amount. In the grant applications themselves, I've added some extra contingencies over the number you see here. Hopefully, these are the numbers we would come up with. Obviously, by the time we get around to accepting a grant, we'll have better numbers.
Another question, or another comment I was gonna have, is that personally I'd prefer continuity in the placement of the bike lane. So keeping it on the same side would be my preference. I don't know if there's any dissenting opinions on that, but we're-
Mr. Dickerson.
What process are you gonna use to make a final decision on option A, B, or C?
We're gonna probably sit down with our, we haven't even, we need to get a design consultant on board for this particular project. Anderson Perry is on the preliminary mockups that you've seen, and what we will probably do is sit down with the university and work through with the other schools in that area to see what works. We may be a bit at odds in terms of what our objectives are, in terms of parking versus the cycle facilities, because there's only so much right away. We run into this all the time, but our intent is to try and make it something that works for their campus as well.
And whichever option you do choose, you will have a limited lane space of 12 feet? Is that what I heard you say before?
I believe that's what we have on the two lanes. I'd have to go back and look. I think that's what we have, and then the cycle track is typically four foot and four foot with a three foot median in between that and the other lanes.
Yeah, and with parking, does it narrow down the traffic lanes?
Yeah, I think we actually have 14 and a half feet, so it's a little wider on that one.
Ms. Selby.
I agree with the bike lane continuity. I think it's nice to have the wider sidewalk, because a lot of traffic on pedestrians on the opposite side from the bikes, to kind of keep that separation between bikes and pedestrians. I realize that there's physical separation, but people don't always walk exactly where they're supposed to or ride exactly where they're supposed to. And obviously, I think we need to work with the university on parking issues, but parking on the north side makes it really dangerous for people coming in and out of those parking lots. And so, if not eliminating severely limiting parking, I think it's gonna be inevitable from a safety standpoint.
Any questions for Mr. Gordon?
I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-011, authorizing staff to apply for grant funding for the Four Bikes project.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion?
Nyhagen. It was, it was in the stereo.
Oh, I only heard you.
Oh, was it in the stereo?
Yeah, it was in the stereo, right.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You're almost off the hook, Mr. Gordon. C Street Reconstruction Project Grant Application.
There's only a word, I think I have to come on after this, so. This is very similar to what we just went through. This is the C Street project, at least I think it should exhibit one up there for us. You folks have seen this project before. It's a little small, maybe a large, but I'll put the screen on there. This up here is C Street, this is Larch, this is Lambert, Madison, and Cedar down here, and this is College Avenue. And this is a major project for us that we've had out for quite some time. We just haven't been very successful with getting the funding. So what we're doing is coming again, similar to what we just did with the Four Bikes project, and asking for your support for resolution for applying for project funding for this. Not much more to say than what you have there on your agenda bill. It's, we're looking at about $2.6 million construction project for what we're in, utilities. We would usually come in about 15% of that with a local match, about make that work. Sometimes we can use larger design classes that match, and then we don't have to pay much at all. Depends on who the funder will be. So, we've got four grants right now that we're looking at for this particular project. That does not include a call by TIB for grants, which we will also apply for this particular project. So, again, just coming before you, we'd like to see this project kick off and fly, but we need money, and one of the ways to get that money is to apply for grants, and one of the ways to help us with that grant application is the Cedar Support Committee.
Mr. Cleveland.
I presume you're also gonna try to include conduit in this one?
That is correct, and I have not had a chance to include the numbers. Again, the numbers are relatively small for the project, but we will absolutely, in fact, Mike and I have talked with our engineer about making sure we get that in there.
Mr. Westphal.
I would just say, in working with Paul and Robert, and then talking with our local internet service providers, it's definitely become apparent that there's a desire for conduits, streets are being put in, and it just helps if the city operates it because then services can be co-located, we can make the, we can essentially get rents from folks, lease in the space in the said conduit. When I was in Colfax, we made quite the money on that, so that definitely is the way of the future, and I'm saying all that because I think it's advantageous for us as we are opening up streets, that we should be putting that raw conduit in there at the same time we have everything open, because that's really a new revenue opportunity for us, and it saves the internet service providers money because it's already in the ground, they just have to put the fiber in.
Mr. Dickerson.
Does this photo here accurately reflect the final design if we were to win? Okay, so the intersection of Larch and Seag is gonna just stay?
No change really there, and we looked at it, if you recall, we had some studies at Central, the College Place study, where they did the intersections there, they related recommending it from that, so it's gonna stay the same.
Ms. Selby.
I would like to affirm the fiber idea because it also extends the life of our streets by decreasing the number of times that they need to be ripped up to put in fiber and change fiber. So, I think that's a really important aspect.
Mission.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-012, supportive application for project funding for the C Street Reconstruction Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hartwig, Facility Plan Amendment Draft Report.
As you see, your G B, our contracting engineer firm, has submitted the facility plan amendment to Ecology for their review. Ultimately, it will come back to you for approval and then go back to Ecology for their approval. We'll give comments back from them, and we'll have to address it in this plan. Also, you have a 450-page copy in your packet of the Facility Plan Amendment. It's a good, exciting read, but anyway-
What's your favorite part?
It basically outlined different options that we could look, that we looked at on how we can achieve compliance with the upcoming permit. They did the pluses and minuses of each option, ended up meeting with Public Works Committee two times and discussed those options, came down to the land treatment option. Biggest reason probably is the cost, and it also keeps us out of the reclaimed water rule, which puts additional requirements on us. But we just wanted you to have an opportunity to review it, if you enjoy that read, and we will come back to you once Ecology reviews it and gets back to us comments, and then we'll address those comments and ask for a motion to accept that claim and institute formally to Ecology.
I have to admit, it's absolutely fascinating. Page turner? Questions for Mr. Hartwig? Well, there's, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
Thank you.
Mr. Gordon, C Street, for its Poplar Minor Intersection Study.
Thank you, Mayor, again. This is, thank you. So, this is the quick report, administrative report, on a study that we have the opportunity to engage in. City of Walla Walla is actually studying the whole Poplar corridor. In fact, I can't take a quick turn back to go, I don't recall, but they're including , what's that, two, the Walla Walla line? To the library, okay, to downtown. Anyway, they're looking at the whole corridor, they're using DK as associates as their engineer for that, and we internally have had some discussions between ourselves and with the City of Walla Walla, and their engineer, our city engineer, about collectively working on that intersection, because it's not the best in the world. And if you recall, coming down from the north and trying to take a right and parry over your corner, and it just doesn't work really, really well, and we'd like to see some changes if we can. We want to make sure that that intersection continues to function well for our retail folks in that area. That's really important for the city, and so one of the things we want to do is have, is ask the council, the open, to us going out to bid, to possibly have a study that will work with the City of Walla. We ask if we can actually play a shirt-tail relationship on top as an addendum to their particular contract, and they're not real comfortable with that, I understand, but if we can get a contract out there at the same time, you know, with the same firm or somebody else who can dovetail with them, we may be able to save some costs and get it done. So, we're thinking initially at least looking at right turn drop lane, going south on Myra here possibly. They're looking at a drop right turn lane going up here to create the traffic. That'll keep so much backup occurring across the entrances to Waldo in particular. And then we also have some interest in possibly looking at what we might be able to, the bicycle route that would link up with our Whitman Trail or Whitman Path. So those are some of the ideas. Intersections that we anticipate that we're looking at are, of course, the main intersection, but also the Waldo accesses as well as DCO Road here. This is the future of the crossing. This is a project that may go on any time. It's been sitting on our desks for, I don't know, maybe-
Year and a half.
Yeah, a lot longer than that. So it's ready to go, they just need to decide to move forward, so that's kind of sitting out there. We also have a Whitman Village Support Walla Walla project that will also, we expect, get some traction later this year, and so we're trying to anticipate all that, make sure this intersection continues to work well, especially with the fact that we've got a Walla Town Center starting in operation. So, just coming to you, let me know that we're planning to go out to bid on a inherent contact.
Mr. Dickerson.
Do you think there'd be an advantage to kind of waiting to see what design they propose so that ours can actually coordinate with whatever they come up with?
I'd like to influence that design upfront, if I can, and they're open to that. We could wait-
Otherwise, we may have to end up doing two studies.
Yeah, I'd like to do it alongside that, and they've said, in fact, at the staff level, they're really open to working right with us. We want to make sure it works for everybody. You know, obviously, if they can't get traffic from our side of the jurisdiction, they're gonna have a hit on their businesses as well, so who's everybody gonna be working together?
Ms. Selby.
A couple of thoughts. One, I would think that we would want to keep this particular intersection at a level of Service C rather than D. I know we say we've adopted that for our city, but I think this one needs to be at C. But I'm wondering if it- But I'm wondering if it also makes sense to look, to broaden the study to be not just these intersections, but also down Myra Road for two reasons. Down Myra Road to 125, 125 is what I'm thinking, not towards Rose. Because the, I think the Whitman Street, if level service drops here, we're going to see more people going to Whitman, which is going to end up influencing, you know, all over the place. And then that fact that you can't do a left turn off of 125 onto Commercial, that also affects how traffic flows and where it goes all the way up and down that corridor. So I don't know how much more expensive it would be, but it seems like if we're looking at this intersection in isolation, we make up slightly different ideas than if we're looking at it as part of that whole corridor.
No, that is, that is, if you don't mind my interjecting a few comments here, that is an excellent idea. In fact, we tried that with City of Walla Walla, because they control the whole road. Our level, we would, in order for it to take, in the state, we'd really, I think, have to do it alongside them. And we asked to do that, and we came this close to it before the pass and it didn't happen, probably for whatever reasons.
So they have both halves of Myra?
Yes, yes. And so we don't control access, and that's why we have such a difficulty getting any access on the other road. In terms of that pork chop at, to the south, which is the one you're referring to, Commercial Drive, Mike, I believe you've had some conversations with the City of Walla Walla?
Yeah.
And I don't know if you want to interject, but it sounds like...
Ms. Rossettella.
Yeah. Well, a couple of comments. As far as the Commercial Drive portion, we basically have an agreement with, with a mutual understanding, where they touch State Route 125 and Myra down there, that pork chop that's providing the left turns into Commercial Drive is going to go away. Because if you recall, that was essentially what opened up to where we provide support leather there, grants down there. The other thing I wanted to add as far as jurisdiction over Myra Road is that from Rose Street down to State Route 125, City of Walla Walla owns and operates all that tobacco sidewalk. However, there's a little tiny section that goes like from Rose Street to just south of Electric Avenue. I believe or not, that's actually City of College Place. That little section to the north. It's like a little peninsula, but...
Mr. Dickerson.
I'd like to add too, just for memory's sake, that there's a clause in that agreement that says reasonable access from College Place shall not be denied.
Yeah.
Onto Myra. Would you care to comment on the efforts to turn Myra Road into a state facility?
Uh, I'll elaborate a little, a little bit on that. So the Washington State Department of Transportation, they pretty much know that there is an issue with routing trucks down 125 to Ninth. They know this. There is, there is a shorter term look at essentially routing truck traffic, where instead of having 125 go past Myra, that designation would basically do a left turn on Myra, and Myra would become the 125. What is holding that up is that City of Walla Walla will basically not accept that until the state paves Ninth for them, and then at that juncture, it'll switch over. However, Washington State Department of Transportation, they are budgeting to do that in a year or two. So that is actually happening. And then they'll basically transfer over to WASDOT jurisdiction, Myra Road.
Mr. Dickerson.
Well, that brings up the question, what are the ramifications of changing all of Myra Road if it's turned over to the state? All the studies we've done and all the intersections we've done, what are they going to do? What are their requirements, their new, what's their standard?
Well, well, I mean, if they just went into uninformed, it would be strict. However, we have had conversations with the Washington State Department of Transportation. They realize that this is a sensitive corridor, and they've been working on engaging both sides to essentially have that conversation and take into account those previous studies, because this isn't just your run-of-the-mill state highway like 125 going past Myra. Whether they like it or not, it does provide access on both sides to retail, residential, you name it. So the behavior is different, and in the talks with Roger Miller over in Olympia, they seem to understand that, and they're willing to work with us. And I've expressed that, that if they want to take it over, the, in general, we're supportive of that, but just keep in mind, the, the retail's our brother and brother, and I realize it may be in your requirements to run stuff like a Speedway, but we need to allow good access to our retail and other developments in our city. And they seem open to that, so.
Good question. Other questions for Mr. Gordon or Mr. Rossettella? Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Rossettella, I forgot to add it, but you have some announcement for us.
Oh, well, let Robert get the last one.
Oh, pavement, excuse me. I checked it up for you. Mr. Gordon.
How are we doing with that?
I tried to get you out of this.
I appreciate that. This is a, another contract that the City of Walla Walla is issuing. They are working to actually get a pavement management program, and they haven't passed it yet, and they haven't approved it yet. And we were trying to ensure fail on their contract. Again, they're not terribly comfortable with that. So we went to the, to their, to DRI, who is the folks that they are working with, and asked them if they would be willing to put an estimate for us. Because initially, we're thinking we're actually going to work with them, with the City of Walla Walla. A pavement management program is really an asset management program for our streets. And what involves is pavement ratings. You go out and you find, you know, for example, it's zero to 100, and we have places on College Avenue, I think we're four to six out of 100, which, you know, that was really bad. But that ages how bad your streets are, and it's helpful for funding, for planning, and for putting your money where you want to in terms of priorities. So that's all good. The question becomes for us is how much of an asset program do we want? We also have a need for an asset program for our water and our sewer and our buildings and everything else that we have. So we're in conversations, I've been in conversations with Ms. Coore and with Mike. And so the way we've written this basically is we'd like to put out a request for proposals, and we would probably make it street-centric, but we need to include the possibility of having a comprehensive asset management program that we can work with, so we don't have one for streets, one for water, one for sewer, something that dovetails all together and we can use in one place. So that's, that's the intent here. So what we're asking for here, we're not actually asking, it's just informational. We will go out and just ask for quotes and see what we get coming in. And we just want you to know about it.
Questions for Mr. Gordon. Ms. Selby.
Uh, one thing that concerned me a little about reading this was the recognition, they said that they would buy the license. But then there was talk about they would provide technical support, et cetera. So would we actually have access to the data directly?
Yes, it would be in our GIS system. It would actually go in. And there's different ways to tailor this. They don't necessarily, we would, it would be our license, and they have a very comprehensive system they give them to the City of Walla Walla. I'm not sure we need that level. In fact, we've talked about maybe just doing the ratings on our federally classified roads, because the other ones, we can kind of look at and say, that's a problem. And we don't have plenty associated with it. So, so there's flexibility. We're going to probably write this a lot broader than what you see as just the pavement management, and we'll probably give ourselves some flexibility so that we can kind of weed out elements that may possibly that we need.
Ma'am.
In general, I would support having some sort of infrastructure management system, because the pavement and other infrastructure that a city has is usually its most expensive asset. And if we're not managing it and tracking it, it makes it hard to justify what we're doing. And I would encourage us to do that with all of ours, not just federally funded, because we need to be able to show very clearly to our citizens what's funded and what's not, and where the funding's coming from, and why some of our roads are like this. So I think it needs to be all of it. Just my thinking.
Other questions for Mr. Gordon? Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Rossettella.
Okay.
You have good news.
Yeah, now I have good news, it's something we tried for a couple of weeks ago, which actually I put in for a while. I was on vacation in the mountains. I had to come back down the mountain and file it. But about a month ago, there was a call from the federal government in the state of Washington for a concept that's called Opportunity Zones. That was a program that was developed through that U.S. Tax Cuts and Jobs Now program that President Trump put through. And what it is, is it's a competitive program where of all the lower-income census tracts that a state has, up to 25% of them can be chosen as Opportunity Zone. And it's very competitive, and you turn in applications, and the state does their thing, and then lets you know if you get it or not. If you get an Opportunity Zone, what it allows is it creates an opportunity fund with banks and financial institutions, and essentially investors and developers, they can defer capital gains tax and all sorts of stuff for up to 10 years. It was a very competitive process. However, on Friday, we received word that the census tract that goes from Electric Avenue on the north to Lampertie Magenner on the south, and then Myra Road to the east, all the way out to Academy Way out to the west, was accepted into the program. So College Avenue, Myra Road, Rose Street, that is all now an Opportunity Zone, and that will be designated as such for 10 years.
Wow. Whoa.
And there's only one other one of these in the whole county. So the Port put in an application for the census tract over where the Cliff Star Apple Juice Factory is at, over by the penitentiary. So that's the other one that the Port, which is the ADO, the Area Development Agency, they put in that one, because they have the ability to designate one for the whole county, and then we went through the competitive pool, so.
Ms. Selby.
I just want to say how much I appreciate your tenacity and creativity in going after all of these grants.
Thanks.
I mean, investing in you has been the best investment that I've ever made in terms of return on investment. So I'm just, wow. And I hope you're taking a little more vacation to make up for it.
Well, yeah. Unfortunately, the deadline was right when I was camping out in the Olympics, so that was fun, but, oh, wow.
I'm not planning to write grant applications while I'm on vacation, so take any grant applications that you have.
Is there any other business to bring before the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby. It's been seconded by Ms. Nyhagen.